Okay, so now it's going.
Okay, well, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Somebody wish to move the agenda to the presented? Judy? Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. It's Carrie Denham.
I've got three that they're not. They're red. They were green to start with, but they've turned red.
Mine's green.
All right, we'll do the show of hands if we need to.
So Cole, Will and Richard.
We'll try it on the next one and see how we back out. Okay, it's Carrie Denham. Okay, moving on to the adoption of the previous minutes of the regular meeting of January 24th. Any questions, errors, omissions?
We'll make the motion to accept minutes as presented.
That moves them. Any question on her discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. See if it comes up for you guys.
I'll see it in. I got ads from Will, Richard and Cole.
Mine's just coming up now. It's Carrie Denham. Okay, moving on to the committee of the whole meeting on February the first. Any errors, omissions or not minutes?
Just wanted to point out to council that because we did those sessions over two days, we did them as two different committee meetings. One basically with the consultants, the staff.
Okay, hearing none. Somebody wish to move the... Any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, you'll call the question. Is the box coming up under you guys as we... Okay, it's Carrie Denham. Okay, moving on to the committee of the whole meeting of February the second. Any errors, omissions, questions? If not, we entertain a motion. Judy? Okay, any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Favors in favor? Okay, so we've got three. So it's Carrie Denham. Okay, moving on to delegations. We have two delegations for the meeting. First one is from Old Man Watershed Council and Shannon Frank is our presenter.
Hello, yes, good evening. Thank you for having me and thank you for accommodating me virtually. My husband had surgery a couple of weeks ago, so just needing to stay close to home for him. Can you see my slides?
Yes.
We can.
Perfect, thank you. So you should have received in the mail a copy of our annual letter of request. We do ask each municipality in the Old Man Watershed for 47 cents per resident as a voluntary contribution. So I'm hoping to provide some information today so you can make an informed decision. Next slide, so I'm talking about the Old Man Watershed today. And I know watershed isn't necessarily a word we all use every day. So it's just all the land that drains into the Old Man River through its many tributaries. And on the next slide, you'll see the shape of the Old Man River watershed. It's an irregular shape because it's a natural boundary where the hills and the valleys naturally run into each nearby tributary. So we cover the whole area and there's... Now on the next slide, I'll tell you a little bit about us and then a little bit about our projects. So our vision is a healthy, resilient watershed where people, wildlife and habitat thrive. And our mission is a collaborative forum for all voices. So it's really important for us like it is for you. On the next slide, you'll see we focus on the three pillars of environment, society and economy. Or as some people prefer to say, people, planet, profits. So we're always thinking about all three and on the next slide, you'll see there are actually 11 watershed councils in Alberta. And we all operate the same way, thinking about those three pillars and to be a local voice to the provincial government and sometimes the federal government. We share a lot of information with local municipalities as well. You probably receive emails from us just letting you know about different things that are happening, whether it's a public engagement opportunity with the province or the federal government or events and such. So all of our planning advisory councils work together on provincial issues as well. And on the next slide, you'll see our board of directors has 19 seats. So we try to be that collaborative voice by having a seat for each sector. I won't go through them all, but on the next slide, you'll see some of the organizations currently filling those seats. There is one for towns and villages. Currently Mayor Kent Bollock from Barnwell fills the seat. And Deputy Mayor Hazard Caldwell from Colhurst is the alternate. And that is elected at the Mayors and Reeves of Southwest Alberta Organization. There's also a seat for rural municipalities, the city of Westbridge. So municipalities together with the three seats actually have the most seats on our board. We have also a seat for the Kani Nation, Kana Nation, academia, health, environment, industry, et cetera, et cetera. The province, of course, the feds and industry. So the next slide, I want to highlight that we are neutral. So we're all about sharing information. So it's, we don't take positions on development projects or government policy. What we do is we share information about science. So we would say the potential impacts on the watershed of choice A or choice B are these. And we would talk about them, but we wouldn't say, you know, you must choose A or B. We know that that's up to elected decision makers. We also talk a lot about what we're hearing from our sectors. So we share that local context and those voices from our sectors. So for example, a couple of years ago, you know, when coal was a big thing, we shared information about potential impacts of coal mines, but we also talked about the potential benefits. And we tried to share information about what our stakeholders were concerned about. For example, like agriculture, we wanted to make sure, you know, any water pollution would not impact their sector. So in that way, we were talking about science and the local stakeholder voice. It's really important to us to maintain that trust with everybody and we know in order to do that, we have to be neutral. So next slide, I'll switch now to a little bit about our projects. So the first project is our legislation and policy. So I mentioned a bit about this already. I'll just add that we do sit on some Alberta and Barnum Parks committees. So we have seats on various committees related to water management. Also with Alberta Energy Regulator, they have a multi-stakeholder engagement and advisory committee. And we also have a seat on the Alberta Water Council, which is a provincial nonprofit chaired by the government of Alberta. So there's many opportunities to give input and we try to be that local voice for Southwest Alberta. Next slide, you'll see our Headwaters Education and Restoration Project. So this one is all happening in the mountains where 90% of our water comes from. And we've been doing on-the-ground education, talking directly to recreatists. So either we approach them while they're camping and while they're enjoying time out there and we have a nice chat. Or we set up activities at busy places like staging areas or bathrooms. And we talk to people that way as well. Last year, we spoke to 1,800 people in the back country. And we have really good success having those one-on-one conversations and building those relationships. And we're seeing increased adoption of positive behaviors like picking up garbage, putting out fires, not spreading invasive weeds, using bridges, that sort of thing. We also do quite a bit of restoration. So along creek banks in the mountains and foothills, we plant willows and trees. Last year, we planted 2,500 willows along seven creeks. And that's helped stabilize, prevent erosion and, excuse me, create habitat. Willows are really the rebar of the stream bank, so they're really important. And then what we do is we monitor the creek to see, is it making a difference? And the photo is of us collecting benthic invertebrate samples. So those are the little bugs that live on the bottom of the creeks. And they tell us a lot about the health of the creek. So we're always making sure we monitor over time the impact. On the next slide is our watershed legacy program. So this is more of a rural stewardship program where we're investing in on-the-ground projects that mostly by agricultural producers, but sometimes by towns or small organizations. We fund things like fencing off of a creek or putting in an upstream watering system to attract cattle away from water so that the stream bank can re-vegetate. We've had people install drug-tolerant gardens as like a demonstration garden in their town. We funded wetland signs at places like the Birds of Prey Center. And we encourage you as well to apply if you ever have an environmental project. We fund lead pools and garbage pickups and educational activities. So this is open to anybody and we try to be really flexible with the program. And we've had 70 so far and I'm going strong. The next slide is our indigenous partnerships. So we work directly with both of the nations in our watershed and their land management departments primarily on similar activities to those I mentioned, like willow planting on stream banks. We had three willow planting events together last year on First Nations land. We've invested in 65 health assessments as well, where they're measuring the health of their grasslands and their range and how many cattle it can support, what's the health of the ecosystem, that sort of thing. And a seed collection project as well to help restore the native prairie and a native trout monitoring project to try to get a handle on which creeks still have native trout where populations could potentially be restored. Next slide is youth education. So we also do field trips and activities with youth in classroom presentations as well. So we try to focus on getting them outside in the creek, in the wetland, learning directly from the watershed and talking to them about benthic invertebrates, those bugs along the creek. And, you know, making sure they have that connection to nature that will stay with them as they age. Next slide is the last project I will highlight. So this is our newest project. And it's all about building trust between urban consumers and rural producers. We're finding a lot of people have questions and maybe even concerns about where their food comes from. Is it safe to eat? You know, they hear something and they're not sure if it's true. So we're helping address this and build trust because we know that our food is safe and that, you know, producers are doing a lot to make sure that they are, you know, being good stewards of the environment and also making sure that the food is healthy and safe. So we want to showcase the good work that is happening in our watershed. And this project's going to involve in-person events where consumers can talk to producers about how they're, you know, branching or farming. And also we'll have stories through video and written formats to really showcase our local food economy and the good things that are happening from whether it's a brewery, a bakery or a farmer itself. So really showcasing our local industry and all the good things that are happening. So lastly, please keep in touch. You can be a member as a municipality or as an individual or both. I encourage you to do that. It is free. We have a newsletter and a website, of course, and we're on all the social media channels. So please do follow us and stay in the loop what's happening. And lastly, this beautiful picture where the Old Man River meets the Bow River to form the South Saskatchewan River, which flows through Saskatchewan into Lake Winnipeg in Manitoba and ultimately out to Hudson's Bay. So we're at the top and, you know, we have a lot of responsibility up here to keep the water clean and clear for everybody down the stream. And so I want to thank you for being a part of that and happy to take your questions.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Is there any questions from anybody? Well, we appreciate your presentation. I always appreciate every time you come to Mayors and Reeves or you're there every month and it's great. I do share that, or we do share the information you share with the Mayors and Reeves. So we do share that with all the councillors. So we appreciate all you've done for keeping our watersheds as clean and as good as they are, so.
Well, thank you for sharing information, Shannon. We appreciate that.
So there's no other questions? Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you chiming in and hopefully your husband's feeling better, so.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too, Shannon.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Community Futures.
Kayla.
Kayla, yeah.
And Ursula. So we have your presentation up on the screen, so.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for having us. So let's start with the next slide, please. It shows our mission statement, our purpose statement. And I'm not going to talk much about it. It's self-explanatory. And if you go to the next slide, please. It shows how many CF, Community Futures organizations there are in Alberta. So one of the things, and I don't know how many of you are familiar with Community Futures, so I'm just going to repeat some of the most important information. All of our offices work independently. So we are all independent organizations. So what we are presenting tonight is specific to our office, not necessarily to other offices in the province. We share some commonalities, generally speaking, the projects and stuff that we do are very specific to each office. So on the next slide, you will see our specific region, which basically in a nutshell includes all of Fatales County and all of Vulcan County, and then a little bit of the MD of Willacreek, just the northern part around the mountain. And next slide, please, would be the show the CFH Board. So we have a rather large board. Right now, we have 17 people on board. It should have 18 because we have two representatives from each shareholder region. And for Vulcan, which I will show later, but for Vulcan, that is Councilor Smith, Will Smith, and Sherri Papke as the member in large. And next slide just talks about what our board does. We have a governing board, so it provides leadership, financial stewardship and all those good things. And it also includes the Investment Review Committee, which is the body that decides on loans. And the Investment Review Committee is solely made out of members at large so that we don't have conflict of interest with elected members, potential conflict of interest. I am going to skip over the next slide, the purpose, and go to the services that we offer. So we have four major areas of service. The client services, loans, community economic development and strategic planning. Very quickly about the client services, that would be the next slide. The work with, I apologize, I'm at home, my cap is coming to visit him. Client services include ideal consultation, includes initial business coaching. So we have a lot of clients that are referred to us that either want to start a business and don't know where to go from there and what the next steps are, or people who are already in business and want to expand and again, need some assistance with that. Next slide talks about the loans that we provide. We are a developmental lender. What that means is that we can only provide a loan if a traditional lender has actually denied the client, so that said no. And we also work with our clients much more intensely than a bank would. So if we do, if somebody does qualify for a loan with us, we will visit them on a regular basis. We will continue working with them. It's not just throwing money at them and walking away. I will not go over all the other things that is self-explanatory there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And then, are there any questions? Sorry. Okay, so I wanted to find out one loan that might be of particular interest to you, being a council. It's called the Community Business Initiative Loan. That would be on the next slide. And that is a loan that allows a municipality and us to work together to help business owners in the community. And it's most applicable to situations where you want to redevelop downtown or like do beautification, that kind of project. Where usually communities get some kind of brand or qualifying for some kind of brand for this kind of work. But the grant barely covers really all the costs. And then there's always the issue with, you know, helping people out who have their own private businesses and locations and buildings. So the way this grant, this loan works, sorry, is that the three shareholders basically would work together, the municipality, ourselves, and then the business owners. And what we are suggesting with this is that the municipality would pay the interest on loans. The business owners would take out loans for as much as they need. And we, of course, would provide the loans so that it's a win-win for everybody. The business owners get, or building owners get an interest-free loan. The municipality achieves what they want with the beautification. And can also organize contractors so that everybody has the same standard of work. And ideally, prices are lower because everybody is, you know, using the same contractors. And we, of course, win because we get more clients. So something interesting, hopefully, for you to consider. Next slide just shows some of the industries that we are working with. We are very inclusive. We really don't have too many industries that we wouldn't support. We've been told in no morally questionable businesses. I'll leave that up to your imagination. That said, we can't do cannabis. And then the next slide shows how our loan portfolio, how much is in Vulcan. We would like to change that number. As you can see, it's the lowest actually of all the numbers with the exception of, I think, MD of, no, MD of Willacreek has more right now. So we really want to change that and we need your help. We are an office of five people, including myself. And there's only so much we can do to get the word out. And one of those team members that we have is exclusively for one of the projects we'll be talking about. So the more we have people spreading the word about who we are, like we can assist business owners, the more we can hopefully service the region as well. So we're really working on getting out more. We've had a team member just visited you last week. You're a good region municipality. So the other thing that we're really pushing a lot right now is economic development. I am not going to talk too much about the past projects. Let's talk about, which is the next couple of slides down, is the current economic, the community economic development projects. And as you can see, we have a slew of items that we are providing. And pretty much all of those, with the exception of strategic planning, are free of charge. So Entrepreneurs with Disabilities Program is a program that has been around for decades now. And it's a program that all CF offices in Alberta have access to. And it provides coaching for people that self-identify with any challenge, that they have any challenges. That can be mentally, that can be physically, somebody with a bad back can qualify. Somebody who is dealing with anxiety, ADHD absolutely can qualify. And they can get up to 60 hours of coaching with a specially trained business coach. Usually we start off with about 15 to 30 hours to see that there's engagement. And that coaching can be around creating a business plan. It can be about implementing a business plan. It can be focused on marketing, on financial, education, all those kinds of things. So we have a variety of coaches available. The next one is the Southern Alberta Succession Plan Project. And that is in collaboration with seven other Community Futures offices. We are covering almost all of Southern Alberta south of Edmonton. The only regions we don't cover is around Drumheller, Tabor and Medicine Hat. But everything else is covered. And that project will end March 31st this year. Under this project, we can provide education to business owners. So we have free workshops online that are provided by vendors that are specialists in the area. One of them is the Alberta Business Family Institute. They specialize on family transition businesses. We specifically wanted to have somebody that's focused on that side of things because let's face it, in a lot of rural areas and agriculture, there is still a high percentage of people that hand their business down to a family member. And then we have another vendor who concentrates on third-party sales. And then we also have a third vendor involved that who has a very innovative and secure online buy-sell platform for businesses. It's kind of a KGT for business, only it's secure and it's confidential. And business owners can decide how much of their information they divulge or not. And it attracts buyers potentially internationally. So it's a great tool. We purchase coupons for that. And usually it costs $2,500 for a three-year membership. It costs businesses $25 right now, 1% of the cost, to take advantage of that. And last but not least, we still have times available, so we have instituted some one-on-one coaching. So if you know of anybody who is thinking of wanting to leave their business or get the business to a point where it works without them so that they can just take dividends from the business while the business is still theirs, please reach out to us. Have them reach out for us. We have excellent coaches in place. We have excellent resources in place. And we have a little more than a month left, so let's help people as much as we can.
Ursula?
And then smart start, I wanted to thank council, sorry.
Ursula, before you get too far, you've got about a minute left. It might kick you out. It might let you keep going. We are a paid one, but for some reason, every now and then, it'll kick us out at the 45 minutes. You can just rejoin the meeting if you do get kicked out.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So smart start, I wanted to thank council for approving that. We are so excited. We have basically got our whole region on board. I'm going to let Kayla talk about that.
So Smart Start is an eight-month-long entrepreneurial training school. It's in...
Joyce of Technology.
Who are you waiting on, Ursula or Kayla?
Are you sure?
I'm not seeing who.
It hasn't been quite some time since you've attended a meeting in person.
Yeah.
Sure has.
They've never been.
We have to go in the daytime probably to see her.
Yeah. Will, when I kicked you out the first time, did we have to restart another meeting?
I don't think so. No, I still clicked on the same link.
Okay.
Wow, gosh, that's too bad.
Ah, yeah.
Oh, there we go.
There's one. Sorry about that, Ursula.
I'm ready to back.
Yeah, you're back, Kayla's not, so.
Kayla, hopefully we'll be back soon, hopefully she's not still going.
Okay, well, I'll not waste your time, if that's okay, then I'll just keep going right now.
Sure, well, yeah, well, it should let me know when she comes back in.
Yeah, she just texted me, she said he's not letting her back in.
We were just saying a great thing about technology.
Yep.
She should be able to use that same link again, I wish.
Yeah.
Well, if you'd like to carry on, go for it and then when she comes on, we'll.
So Smart Start, as Kayla was starting to say, it's an eight-month business incubator program. And do I need to talk much about it? You just looked at that and approved it, so I'm not sure that I need to talk about it. We have a deadline, October 20th, for people to sign up. And also, we still need a volunteer from Vulcan, please, to help us with the program. So that would be, if you again can help us spread the word, that would be amazing. If, you know, you can send something. She says, sorry, Kayla just texted me saying she's in now, just waiting to get in.
Okay, I will. Sorry about that.
No problem. So anyways, if, you know, if there's a way that you can.
There she is.
There she is.
Put out the word to the business clients in Vulcan. We also just had somebody, like I said, walk around town and let them know as well, but that would be fantastic. Kayla, I just kind of summarized the Smart Start, so if you want to keep going, this digital service squad, that would be great.
Yes, we're sure. So the Digital Service Squad, it was part of the Alberta Digital Economy Program. This was a grant that was funded by the government of Alberta and it was distributed by Business Link. And this program offers business owners one-on-one social media support, website building, help them get Google My Business app, work through their content and prepare content for them, work with them to create a marketing strategy. Each business will get 10 to 15 hours to meet their needs. And each business, we kind of work together to make a customized plan for them, so that we can figure out the needs that they have and work with them. And we're willing to go meet businesses in person as well. We'll come and drive up to Vulcan so that we can do visits with business owners. Through this, they also get free photos of their business, including a 360-degree photo that gets uploaded to Google, so that it just makes it easier for potential customers to see what their business actually looks like. And yeah, it's a really great program. And it's very customizable to the business owners and the needs that they specifically have to kind of support them. And through it, there's also training as well as workshops.
Thank you, Kayla. So again, we hired a special team member just for this project to be able to service all of our region. And she was in Vulcan last week, right Kayla?
Yeah.
And by the way, these are in more detail down, if you go down the slides. I forgot to mention, if you keep going down the slides, there's more detail in each slide about that. So then we have the Rotary Alberta Business Entrepreneurship Camp. That was on hold for the top last two years due to the pandemic, of course. The goal is to have it running again this year. It's a program for 13 to 15-year-olds. They can access this free of charge. All the fees are paid, the only cost to families is for the last day of camp when they need to go and grab their camper from camp and spend some money at the farmer's market. So campers get put into teams, come up with business ideas, need to talk to a banker, leave some collateral behind, that had my daughter absolutely freaked when she took part in that. Then they need to have somebody kind of go into the city to get some supplies, they make their own product. And then the last day of camp, they sell the product. So family and friends who come down will be presented with a little farmer's market. It's a cool little program, last week, like it's usually the 30th week of August. And registration, registration will start in March. And then if you have gone through the slides, I can't see the slides on your end, but there is one for strategic planning. We provide strategic planning to all kinds of businesses, including municipalities, by the way. We do charge a fee for that, so nonprofits, for-profit businesses. And it can be half-day or it can be full-day or two-half-days, whatever people like. And then the last slide is basically how you can contact us. And as a note, before we close here, we are very much working on servicing our entire region. Yes, we are located in Ophitoks, but we are very willing to come out to Vulcan, to Vulcan County, and to be there for this, for our businesses, our clients, our potential clients, and make sure that everybody in the region has access to the services that we offer and collaborate with stakeholders. Kayla just reached out to the Vulcan Chamber today. And just being able to present to you and having a connection with you is fantastic. So we hope that this will continue in the future.
Great, is there any questions for either Ursula or Kayla? Well, you must have done a great job or else most of us are too shy to talk to you.
Yeah, next time I'll come in person.
Yeah, no, we appreciate you guys chiming in though, it's great, I mean zooming in. And anyway, and I'm sure if we have any questions, Will is here and that is on your board, so. And pardon?
She just can't see him.
No, you can't see Will, but I mean, but anyway.
I have ears.
Yeah, he's here. But anyway. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Well, I appreciate you chiming in.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, have a great evening.
Thank you, Ursula, sorry about the technical difficulty. Guys have, guys have a good evening.
Yeah.
Thanks you.
Okay, so those are two presentations from our delegations. Any questions on any of those two? Pardon?
I pushed a button, I have to shut.
Oh, okay. So you're back on then Karen?
Yeah, he's back here.
Okay.
It might be technical.
Yeah, technical difficulties.
I just wanted to move my screen and I hit the shut.
Oh, you shut the screen down.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll move on to correspondence then. Town of Gibbons, there was a letter there on provincial administration penalties.
And this is the ADAS program that you all heard about, the one that they just postponed for 90 to 120 days to review. That's the moving the tickets from being able to be fought in court to just an administrative penalty where there's a short appeal period. They put that out for public engagement and put it, put it to a stop for a minute.
It's not bringing up any of the attachments here.
Okay.
My attachments are up.
Yeah. It's been an internet issue here tonight, I apologize. I'll keep putting stuff up there if you want.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
As long as that keeps working. So that's the gist of that. They're, they're, you know, just making sure that they know that, passing on that more public engagement is needed in this.
Okay, any questions on that one? If not, we'll move on to Minister Ron Orr, Alberta Culture and our invitation to participate in Summer Games, oh, Winter Games or Winter and Summer Games, I should say, a bid. Unfortunately, you know, they usually ask for communities of 10,000 people. And so they're suggesting if you're small, you partner together and put in a bid to do it. There is a grant that you can qualify for, but so I mean, it's, you know, showcases, you know, approximately 3,000 spectators or participants in it. But we have never participated that I know of in Alberta, Winter Games, Winter or Summer Games.
It's only been at the Southern Alberta, but we have.
Yeah, so.
And the big reason being is they ask the leaders to join together. And even our neighboring communities don't have enough facility to accommodate an entire Alberta games, so.
But I assume they send it up to every municipalities, but anyway, that's, that's the application or request that you're interested in. Suggesting we move on. The next one is the National Police Federation. Again, they're talking about all the events that are going on with the RCMP and the provincial issues.
One thing good about this is I've never seen the cops out so much as I have the last few months.
They're actually out there cruising.
Everybody here has signed up to participate in at least one of these sessions.
Yeah.
I have not, no.
Okay.
I, yes, you are.
Yeah? Just haven't got a reminder yet, no.
You're not, it's March.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, you know, we're going to be bombarded with lots of information on this until, you know, the province makes a decision what direction they're going to go. And then even then, we'll probably get bombarded with information on it, so. And the next one is the report from the RCMP. We're very fortunate, we do get usually quarter-early to half-year reports. And this one here just came in from Troy. So it kind of highlights what's been going on and, did you have a comment on it?
Yeah, so for the new councillors, this comes in, this report, the structure stays the same. You can do preparations to different quarters. And Troy has been really vigilant at trying to make sure he comes at least once or a year to visit with all of the municipal councils, which is quite a bit more engagement than we used to have in the past. Troy's done a, done a pretty good job. He's been here four or five times since, since he's been the detachment leader here. So he does not send this out through email to everybody, he just sends it administratively to the office and we just make sure we have it too. And on the times where he does appear before council, we move this report out of correspondence and put it in for his presentation when he's here.
Any discussions, questions? Okay, and then we'll move on to requests for support by the Vulcan Medical Recruitment Committee. This is the one that Lyle sits on for us and I sit on as a member at large.
So for the new councillors, this, this is a request and the, as you've all read, the gist of it is asking for a letter of support. I added it to the agenda based on the conversation that I had with Tom, just to make sure that you guys know. Normally, if it's just a letter of support and it's, it's an organization that we partner with and benefit the community, we generally don't even bring them to. We just, you guys have put a policy in place that administration for those organizations can just leave letters of support over the desk. So to be completely honest, you don't need a motion or anything. We just wanted to show you the basis of some of these letters that come in and what they're requesting. And I don't want to give too much away, but I think Karen's already got the letter of support completed.
Almost.
Almost. But yeah, we just wanted to make sure that you guys saw at least one of these. If, the only time it comes to council according to the policy is if administration looks at it and goes, I, I would like council to have a, a, a review of this. And it's sometimes it's, it's, you know, something that falls outside our scope. But if somebody is applying for a grant that we've already applied for and it could damage one or the other's opportunities to get that grant, then that's something that I would bring to council for you guys to. But if it's something very straightforward like this, we'll just complete them. You won't see the letter unless you want it emailed out to all of you.
Okay, any thoughts, questions? Okay, we'll move on to our stats.
I added this to the information package. The Stats Cam released this on Wednesday. Of course, we don't have all the rest of the information. Of course, the housing density, all that stuff, the diversity, the different language stuff, that will all come in the next coming months. But they did do the population. As you can see, we had a 7% reduction. Based on development permits, things like that in our community. We can't debate this or anything. We used to be able to do our own census, but we can't do that anymore, so we have to go on this. The only thing that we could take away from these numbers is making sure that when this happened, we get it out in our community to make sure that people fill out the census. Because we have things like grant funding that are tied to our, you know, it, it said here that our total private dwellings went down three. And we know for a fact that we've had, we've had new buildings built in our community, so. I added that too. And then just add, this is just straight off Stat Cam's information, in case you didn't get a chance to go and look at it. And then I just added the historical, I keep track of all villages and the towns, or the town within the county, so that you could see where we're at. And you could see, we had a, in 2001 to 2006, we had a fairly substantial gain, down in 2011, back up in 2016. So we're still right where our numbers are. And overall, as a community, including Vulcan County, we're on just a very steady growth pattern. So the, most of the other villages and that saw it, it would be that two in 10% range.
Now, some municipalities do go out and do a census. But like Kim said, that, you know, most, most of them go off of our, our, the Canadian census program, so. So sometimes it's not an advantage to do it, but, you know, our grants do fall into that category. I mean, I guess the disadvantages to the, some of the ones that we pay on a per capita base to some other organizations, they would get less from us, you know, this year than they would have gotten last year on a per capita base.
I just, just from my work, I just find that, that number quite interesting. Because when the epidemic came out, we had a large influx of people coming into our smaller towns and villages. I can see those numbers going up. But the town of Vulcan has also seen, there have been people leaving, but there's also people coming back. And that also shows in our, our inventory of properties available for sale. So I'm, I'm just surprised by that number in that we hardly have any properties for sale. But you see our numbers have gone down, so that's, I just find that interesting.
And one thing to point out, and I don't know if you guys noticed it when you were reviewing it, is if you look at Carman Gaze, there is anomalies in there. They jumped almost 100 for two census periods and then dropped back down. We've all been in this community, most of us, all of our lives, Carman Gaze never jumped 100 people.
No.
I, I think sometimes it depends on who is doing the census and if they are actually very diligent.
But this one here was done by, nobody came door-to-door. This wasn't a person's census, this was mail-in or email online.
Yeah.
So, so there is a potential of discrepancy because of people not participating in the thing.
Guilty is charged.
Yeah.
Because that's that household one, right? Yes, but when we were at the farm, we got census to death. So I see a census and I, we only fill in all of it. They call and say this is one you have to fill out.
And that's one thing, as a, as a community, we could probably, we look at this and if we want to see better results from them, is actually doing an internal promotion, making sure that it's out in the paper, it's out there in our community. But when the census stuff comes out, we have these kind of things, our, our grants are tied to it, those sort of things. We would like as many people as we can communicate. Oh, you know, again, most people see it and go like this. If everybody knows how important it is to how, how we function, it at least gives you that second thought, hey, I've got 10 minutes after summer, maybe I'll fill it out. And so that's kind of my takeaway on this. Yes, we had a drop in population, it'll affect our federal funding. We have a lot of funding that's also tied to our assessment, which we know our assessment is in good shape for our community ourselves. So that's kind of my takeaway. I just wanted to, based on that, not to have the same panic about our, our, our population drop, but to know where, where we've been. So that's why I put the historical in there for you as well. It is disappointing to see that it drops, but again.
We have a higher deaths this year too, you have to take that into account too.
I was just gonna say, our death to birth ratio could be fluctuating now, yeah, absolutely. So hopefully in our census, we'll see different numbers again, but as you can see, we've been up and down.
Do they do those annually?
No, every five. No, every five years.
Every five?
That way I only have to remember our population every five years. When people phone and ask. And we will, as, as soon as they have the full gamut of, uh, of demographics up, we'll update our town folio and, and everything on the website to, uh, to the main person.
Okay, any questions on that one at all? If not, we'll move on to the annual report from Vulcan County Emergency Services.
This is the first time we've received an entire year annual report, and so Doug submitted it and it went out to all of the, uh, municipalities. So it has information for the, uh, entire protective services for the Vulcan County.
Okay, any thoughts, questions on that one?
Just confirms all the stuff you see on the monthly re- your monthly.
All condensed in one.
Most looks good.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a prettier report, yeah.
Okay, if not, somebody wish to, okay, Lyle, this is the correspondence. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Karen, none or all questions? And it is Karen, it's Karen Ashley. Okay, thank you, moving on to the current business. We have Vulcan District Ag Society proposal and, um, we do have a member from the Ag Society here. And, um, so if you'd like to come up, if, if there's any questions once we go into it, then Rod can answer it.
This wired?
Yeah.
So, so what I've done is I, I've put together the report, uh, you've all had a chance to read it, review the information. Uh, Rod and I have been back and forth quite a few times over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we made sure that, uh, this information was also emailed out for, uh, for council to review as well. Uh, this is, uh, you, you guys have read the report. The, this has been an ongoing thing with, uh, with different things happening, the Ag Society's approach to town about, uh, about trying to, uh, get a user agreement in there that benefits the entire community. And from that, uh, the proposal was put forward and Rod was good enough to, uh, be able to come to the meeting tonight to answer any questions you guys might have following up.
Could you bring that up? It's not showing on.
Oh, okay.
I did do this, but.
Thank you. Just let me know when you want to, any, through the board.
Okay, so, um, like, you know, Dick was supposed to come tonight too, but unfortunately he's had some sickness in his family, so wasn't able to come. So, um, Rod's kind enough to come and if there's any concerns or questions with any of the stuff that was in there. I know this is just a proposal and they're, you know, prepared to sit down and have a discussion. Unfortunately, when we had, you know, um, in the past, we've had some discussions with the Ag Societies. For years, we never, you know, they did their thing, we did our thing, and, you know, other groups did their things type thing. And we didn't realize it was a, a problem until all of a sudden it kind of blew up on us as a, and then it kind of fell back and so. Um, the thought that Kim kind of had is that, um, an agreement, um, normally if, if there's a renter of a facility, no matter where it is, we just have a rental agreement that goes with it, you know, when you rent the facility, you know, between the two parties. But, uh, but this would be a kind of a longstanding agreement or, or, um, where, you know, Ag Society being a partner, you know, the car club being a partner, uh, you know, some of the other groups that might be. There are some that might wanna fall under the Ag Society, depending on what happens with, uh, you know, and, and I think that was brought up at the Ag Society meeting. So there might be a, a, a roping group that would fall under the Ag Society. So there wouldn't be an independent that wanna rent the facility, they would fall under the Ag Society. So that they'd be dealing with the Ag Society, the Ag Society would be dealing with us type deal. And I think those are the things that we'd like to flush out personally, you know, so that we all know where we stand. Because again, the Ag Society has done so much for our community in the past years. And, um, we've had such a great relationship with them and unfortunately, it just lets out a little bit and now it's time to, you know, bring it back online, so. Like Kim said, everybody's had an opportunity to review, um, if you have any thoughts or any questions on any of this, um, you know, the Ag Society has equipment and ownership of some of the equipment that they would, would like to, you know, bring to the site and leave there for a period of time. Um, again, if you're a renter, um, in most of our philosophies is that you bring in what you bring in. You, when you leave, you take what to leave with and whatever's left behind becomes either the assets of the community or a liability that the community has taken away, you know, so I think that's just, uh, that's the difference between an agreement with the Ag Society and a, and a rental, I believe, so.
Normally, uh, we would have Rod and, and the Ag Society present it as a delegation. As you know, it's kind of uncommon to have banter in the middle of a, of a proposal. So, uh, the reason why is we wanted to expedite this to get it, uh, along a little bit faster, you know, they, they submitted this in, in January. Uh, it'd be nice to get started on working on an agreement if that's where, where council wants to go. So, uh, Tom has, has stated that he'd be more than happy to open up the floor for, for just direct questions. Even normally, you guys don't engage with, with the gallery, but, uh, like normally our galleries don't contain anyone either, so it's good for Rod to show up.
So, as of, right now, we're just, this is a proposal by the Ag Society, keen on the Ag Society, um, to the town, right?
That's right.
So we're gonna have to discuss the proposal and then get back to them, or are we gonna do that right here, right now?
Well, and, and so if you go back to, uh, to the report that I put together,
Yeah.
is basically you're taking this for information and you have lots of options on how you would like to do, what you could do. And one of the things that I threw out in, in the conclusion is, and I've talked to Rod about this as well, and he felt that it might be a good way to move forward as well, is one of their bullet points was having a committee to discuss some of these things. And for the purposes of trying to draft a, a user agreement or, or, or get this thing moving, is council may wish to, uh, do an ad hoc committee where it's not just administration sitting down, you know, myself sitting down with Rod, trying to draft up an agreement and then going back and forth a bunch of times. We could have a couple of councillors sit there, we could have the Ag, cause this is very specific to just the Ag Society.
Yeah.
So we're looking at establishing that rodeo grounds is the asset of the town, we're responsible for it. And if there's, the Ag Society wants to partner and use that, we put an agreement in place for all the things that we need to address in that, uh, in, in, in this document that they provided. If they're gonna bring equipment in, where does that ownership lie? Is that all, we named that stuff in the agreement, then it gets very easy to manage. If there's a dispute or something gets broken, here's who's responsible to pay for it. And again, it opens it up for the other groups to help mend those fences between everybody using them. And then we can, you know, we start moving towards that common goal. We recognize the town already has started the recreation planning, that master planning for that area. So now it kind of brings in, if an individual renter, so somebody wants to come in and hold the tractor pull, but they only wanna do it one time, they can still be considered an individual renter. But we reach out, when we have our meeting, we reach out to our partners and say, this, you know, this, these guys are proposing this. You know, what do you, what do you think that draws a bid? You know, the Ag Society, under their agreement, may have things that, uh, would benefit that, like an announcing booth or a, a sound system. Would it be available to this other group and that, under this agreement, how would we do that? Basically what we're doing is, we're gonna share this space, let's put an agreement in on how that's, uh, that space is shared. That is going to be a possible thing to debate in a council meeting.
And, I have a question, would we also come to an agreement with, um, some of the other, uh, users?
Yes, yes, this is the first step to open up those conversations with everybody. Anybody that is a constant user or like a repeat user, it, we're gonna try to follow this. Basically, we wanna try to get this template right, and if we get it right, then we can use it for, for other groups.
Start to get, go ahead, Cole.
So to my understanding, rather than have individual groups, um, directly in communication, it would be a buffer almost, they would come directly to us?
Yeah, and, and one of the things that we've talked about with, uh, you guys know that we're gonna be discussing rec agreement, that sort of thing, is this opens up that, uh, the door to not only having, we'll do an ad hoc committee to put this agreement together, but once the agreement's in place, then it opens that door to the discussion we had about facility, uh, users. So once a year, what we talked about for like the arena and the pool, where we're bringing in specific people that have vested interests in those facilities, rather than one overarching recreation committee, now we have all these user groups. So once a year, probably, you know, this time of year, or we would bring these user groups of Virginia Mitchell Park and the rodeo grounds in, sit down, and then we could facilitate that meeting, going, okay, here's what's going on this year, what are our dates looking like? You know, what will work for you guys, what will we, and if we can get everybody in the room, hopefully we can nip any of these things in the bud before. Because I, I know the Ag Society through our conversations with, with, uh, with my conversations with Rod so far is, there's flexibility in here as long as, we just need to make it work for everybody, so. So that's why the proposal, I know you put it in that bottom line, there's flexibility there, we just wanna find the best. We just need to actually formalize that process of how we're gonna get that, uh, agreement in place.
Rod, do you have a picture there or something, or you have?
Yeah, I took a picture of the, of the rodeo ground. And, uh, I, I measured up the arena section. And then I, I measured out from where the loading chute and all that is on the, kind of the northeast corner, straight out to make another little pan. And possibly the, the car club could use that part for, uh, the demo derby. And it also would double as a, uh, a livestock, uh, holding area instead of using the rodeo, uh, arena itself. And in, in between that, during the rodeo or whatever function, it, it would be a place for the horses to warm up. Instead of having them going over here and going over there, uh, cause it creates confusion. We gotta have something straightforward and say, that's where you belong, and that's where it's gotta be. And, uh.
Rod, I have the photo up in, uh, right here, if you'd like.
Yep.
So where are you talking, um, about putting the derby?
Um, this section probably from about here to this trail and then over and up here. So we could make it probably a hundred feet wide, which is what this is, this arena. And this is two fifty long, so I think we'd get about two hundred or two hundred and twenty of this, this trail. So, um, if we, if we build a little pen there, uh, without panels, put out for it, of course. And then, uh, the, could move one or two sets of bleachers over here. And how, uh, there's, there's basically five sets of bleachers up there. So we could put three sets of bleachers here and two here, or however it's used. And, uh, this would work, this area you probably could work for the, the demo derby. Now, it's either that or here for the demo derby. And just make this an area for warm-up of horses and, uh, that. Uh, as far as parking, I've put in there, we wouldn't, we wouldn't utilize this area at all for parking in here during any rodeo function or whatever. Simply because it's too congested, too much chance for problems. And we'd have to, you could put them on, on the street or out in this area here. And probably try and get a little wagon to, to haul people back.
Can you take it down?
Yeah, so, just a little bit there. So that, you don't want to zoom in on those?
Not, not zoom in.
So that would solve some of the issues with, um, when you said that about the metal and
Yes.
stuff like that that's in the rodeo grounds.
Yeah, cause they, there's also a, a group that wants to try and put on a weekly barrel racing. And, uh, so it's, makes it difficult. And I mean, the, the car club gets more people in town during the one day demo derby than the rodeo does for the two and a half day probably. But, I mean, it's a, it's a longer term deal, there'd be people coming in probably every week for the, this barrel racing and, and the brake way roping thing, so.
I'm close to, close to a question.
Would, uh, that pen have an entrance to the main, um, rodeo grounds, I guess?
What's that?
Would you use that new pen that you're suggesting for maybe the entrance for?
Yes, you could probably, there's a gate here,
Yep.
right here beside the loading chute, so you could utilize that to go into the rodeo ground through here. Uh, this is where your loading chute is, so you're, you're gonna have to have it big enough for, for semis to, to turn around. But, uh, your main entrance is gonna be here.
Okay.
Because this is your out gate for your stuff, like, we're gonna have to put pens in here again.
Yeah, I see.
Uh, so that's gonna be your main entrance, barrel racers would come in here and this would be the time to event end down here again like, like before.
I like that, the reason I say it is because a few years back, they had the contestants for the barrel racing at the other end, lined up and Marcia Thoral got run over by a horse like you wouldn't believe. And it could have been worse, and it, you know, you, uh, you can't blame the horse or the contestant.
Yeah.
And you couldn't really blame Marcia either, it was just too congested.
Yeah.
I think that would be a heck of an idea.
Well, with that warm-up pen being out there in that end, uh, that's where your horses are gonna basically be, be in. So when they're, an event opens like your calf roping or your team roping or bulldogging, they would come in that, that gate up here. Right here, and then they'd ride down to their area instead of letting them have access to this.
Yeah.
Keep it right out of here, cause people are gonna be here, people are gonna be here, keep this separate. I mean, it.
That keeps everything, anybody confined.
Yeah, everybody knows their place.
You're right.
Yeah. Instead of having people going up to the ball bins.
Yeah, none of the soccer field.
Doing stuff, so, yeah. As far as warm-up pen, they don't need a huge warm-up pen, but this would, if we made it big enough, we could use it for the, the car club too, so. Kind of simplifies it, the, the ware building is there for everybody to use. It's, uh, it's a good facility, just, uh, got out of control there, so.
Okay, so, um, I, I guess, you know, depending on, you know, what we do for looking at all our user groups, because like you said, I mean, if it's just strictly a rodeo, they only really use the facility for, you know, three or four days out of a whole season. And we have, you know, seven or twenty other users in the facility that use it far more than a rodeo event. So again, I think that would come back to what would fall under the Ag Society's, you know, so like, uh, barrel racers might be interested in being part of the Ag Society, they would fall under the Ag Society's agreement.
Four H.
Or four H, but if they didn't, they wanna be independent, and they said, no, we don't wanna deal with the Ag Society, then they would deal directly with the town, but through a third agreement, you know, we talked about a user group. So again, you might meet at the very beginning of the year and say, you know, how many days does each group need it? When does it fall into play, you know, who's out there? And, you know, but again, some of them might wanna fall under the Ag Society, depending on the, on the makeup of the Ag Society.
And, and I used, when I was, uh, going through this with, uh, internally with the staff, we use the, uh, four H as a perfect example of that. With their one show a year, it's ideal that they would fall under the Ag Society. But if they got in there where they were doing fifteen different shows a year with the sheep and all the different, uh, things, they might want their own user agreement because they may wanna keep their own equipment up there and those sort of things, which would fall outside of the Ag Society. Right now, when they're only doing the one and they're sharing equipment, so I use them as the best example.
Right.
And, and that's why I'm suggesting that we kind of put a committee together, whether, you know, it'd be a few councillors. Cause like, at the end of the day, Bonnie and I are gonna have to work with the Ag Society to try to, you know, the end of the day, Bonnie's the one that has to do the book into that facility.
Yeah.
So we wanna make sure that, you know, we, we can line things up. If we do a good agreement that works well with the Ag Society, it opens the doors to anybody else that wants to do that and gets better use of the facility. If that means moving things around, those sort of things, that, that's easily done. Like, sitting here and drawing lines on the map, I, we've got, uh, about six different drawings that have pens all over the place and those sort of things. And that's, to be completely honest, what you guys are paying for that rec study for. Is at the end of the day, they're gonna say, you need more space or you need, or you can accommodate it by doing this or this. And, you know, we had a, just, uh, just on that topic of, you know, if, if, uh, material and debris becomes an issue, uh, we've talked to other communities where, uh, for the agricultural side of it, they just pull the dirt out, almost like when we used to do the, uh, rodeo in the arena.
Yeah.
We would bring the dirt in, put it in, and that was for that event. And, you know, if we're gonna do ten ag events in a row, then the dirt stays in there. But the minute the car, uh, or an automotive thing comes in and you don't wanna contaminate that soil, it's just as easy to pick it up and load it up and move it as it is to pile it on the sides and bring it back.
Yeah.
So you could take all that good material, take it out on, say, a gravel pad, pile that dirt, run your other event, and then you don't need two facilities. And those are the things that we need to get that feedback on from all the groups before we chew up every square inch with fences and things like that. Cause there are lots of options and you need to get everybody in the room to have those. We chew up every square inch with fences and things like that, cause there are lots of options and you need to get everybody in the room to have those discussions.
One thing about building that, that extra pen, Wes, Rod's saying there, I mean, the pen, you, it's panels, so it's, it's up and down pretty fast, you know, if.
If it works for one event, we can just.
Yeah, and I mean, we can move them out in there pretty fast, you know, so.
But again, you know, uh, we, I think we need to spend a few more minutes than what we've got tonight to discuss the, you know, the pros and the cons, cause again, if you wanna pull that one down, can you pull it down even one more? See that, then you see that red line, those two that go all the way up, that land is the town of Vulcans, no? It doesn't, it doesn't, if, if you can pull it down even again one more and then to the right.
I'll zoom, zoom off and go to there, so all the way to the.
See, that's where it ends though, it doesn't go all the way behind the. Park, the parks, so I mean, we do own that land.
So what would the space be between that chain link fence to where our property line is?
That distance in there?
Yeah.
All right, if that's wide enough, you could use that for warm up, well, warm up.
Distance.
But it doesn't work for, you know, I mean.
What is it, ten, fifteen feet?
Well, it's probably more than that, it's probably twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
But Kim will measure it here. And then tell us.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
But, you know, my shaky hand, but.
But anyway, we, we do own that piece of land and we've got a, we've got a, a person that farms it for us because we don't wanna look after the weeds and all that.
Yeah, right.
Um, I don't know, they might think that it's theirs, which is fine, um, you know, but again, we do own that piece of property, now whether it can be utilized. Again, without sitting down and looking at it and arguing and discussing and turning around and like, I mean, even there's a proposal to move the bleachers and move the rodeo grounds farther to the north and on and on. Until you start, like Kim said, drawing it on a piece of paper and doing some measurements and. Um, but anyway, there, there is some options there that would, you know, again, we gotta remember that it's the, if we just look at a rodeo, it's only a, a short period of time.
Two to three days.
But if we look at other events that are in there that potentially fall into that category that you'd utilize it on a daily basis too, so.
How hard would it be to, to move those bleachers over there and move the rodeo grounds?
It's not that much.
It's, it's like, uh.
Five hundred.
Five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet, so thirty foot wide by five hundred.
Yeah.
You gotta remember in the middle of, uh, in the middle of a rodeo, there'd be crop in there though.
Yeah.
So.
Well, hopefully it's good feet.
But, but again, too, you know, I mean, it's just that there's options up in there and, you know, we did do that study and, and it's, you know. We're just kinda waiting for it, but in the interim, is there stuff that we can do to satisfy all the user groups? And by having a, an ad hoc little group where they can kind of sit down and hash it out, fight, shouldn't say fight it out, but you know, you know, discuss it.
Right.
And then come up with a compromise for interim.
We getting rid from that?
No.
It's just a give, okay.
And, and to be completely honest, yeah, I, and, well, that was one thing that really, uh, sparked my interest is. Inside this, uh, rec study that we're doing, we, we all know that spaces is a commodity up there, our ball diamonds need to expand. Uh, soccer, obviously rodeo, uh, councils expressed interest in expanding the campaigning as well.
Yeah.
Looking at all those things, we know it's gonna come down to space, but how much space is, is gonna be needed. This, if we get everybody back on the same team, uh, working towards this. It becomes a lot easier to negotiate when we have the county, the egg society, the car club, the town, all as a unified voice going to one owner. Who's a member of our community, been a member of our community his entire life and say, hey, this is something that benefits and we're all on board with this. What does this look like? It's not then just one municipality trying to buy the land or. Because as you know, the dollar figures go up when one person shows interest, when the entire community does and you know it's gonna end up in five or six meetings in the newspaper. Changes the opinion of that significantly as well.
You think?
Well, you know, I, I would for myself.
I do think that we should prepare for a plan B or C even though in the event that we can, we should have gotten out.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, when you're landlocked, there isn't a plan B and C.
Well, there's different locations potentially.
There is, that's right, and which one is the easiest, the most that you're going to move. And so I think those are the discussions that need to happen, you know, more than in tonight's meeting, but.
Yeah.
I think it's something that needs to be looked at and that's partly why that study supposedly was supposed to, um, alleviate some of those discussions, but unfortunately. It didn't happen and ended up worse.
So Rod, this is something like what we're discussing is something that egg society would be in favor of?
Yeah.
I mean, and, and again, too, you know, more or less like Kim said and Rod said and Richard said, all of these is that. Um, some of these events are relatively easy to set up and move and, and, and reset up somewhere else. That the long term is the goal, I think, is to do it right, so that, you know, everybody's, um, um, is being satisfied as much as we can. And come up with a, uh, something that's positive for both, all the groups that potentially use that area.
And, and one of the things is the, the rodeo grounds that they, in the current state that they're in, they're not over a lot of people, so, you know, uh, the, the rodeo. Uh, the car club, when they do their events, sometimes they have a two week window before they get their event, that they're in there doing stuff and then two weeks afterwards. If this changes where we have, say, barrel racing or some Jim Kanna or any of those that are nor, that would be in there on a weekly basis, it's gonna change. How the rentals go as well, like, you know, a big event like the rodeo or the, uh, or the, um. Say the demolition derby may only have, in this agreement, you'll have three days to get your, you know, event cleaned up. So that we can get back into our normal rental, if we get to the point where we have normal rentals. So, and that's, that's where really hashing these things out beforehand keeps anybody from getting angry and, you know. If anybody goes beyond their days, then they've breached their agreement, right, and then we, we have a conversation about that.
Well, I think, um, the new egg society's, uh. A lot more liberal, I should say.
Well, but, but again, too, I, I think though that, you know, the previous group that met, there was some concerns, um, brought up about safety of the animals. The safety of the, the spectators, the participants. And, you know, those are areas that we need to address too, because it was a concern, it was a legitimate concern brought forward by the previous group that, um, had concerns. And unfortunately, at the time, we couldn't come up with a solution that was satisfactory in a, the length of time that we had, so. It was, you know, looked at in a different way, so I think that we, we need to look at all of those factors and say that, you know, um. Cause again, that was one major concern was the safety and, and again. Aggress and digress of, of, of equipment, people, animals, um, the whole works and so.
Well, it's a lesson been learned by everybody on it, because, I mean, uh. Some of the stuff just got out of control and, I mean. I, I know how easy it is when you get an outfit using something for so long, they start to believe they own it and.
Right.
It's hard to lose that focus when you're getting involved in it that deep and then. This is why we gotta have an agreement and, you know, you know, we've got to deal with these problems before they hit, so.
Yeah.
I guess, or we, can I make a motion on that?
Yeah, you can, if you like, yeah.
Um, I guess I'd like to direct administration to work with the executive of the Vulcan and District Agricultural Society to draft a new user agreement for the rodeo grounds. In the Virginia Mitchell Memorial Park. And this agreement be presented at a future regular meeting of council for consideration.
Would you like to add an ad hoc committee to that at all, of council members to sit on for negotiating, and that's the only?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Yeah, I would like to add an ad hoc.
Okay, and would, uh, who would we like to appoint to?
Well, we can do this and then point after.
And then you can appoint after, absolutely. So Karen, uh, would you, uh, with two members of council, is that?
Whatever you guys want.
Two.
I think two should be.
Can you add two members of council to sit on that? It's the nice part about my reports, Karen, I change them quickly.
So hopefully that will, um, I couldn't say satisfy, but, you know, hopefully that will work with that egg society, you know. You know, that we can try and sit down together, I think that, uh, other advantage of trying to do it with an ad hoc committee and the opportunity is to, to try and. Fast track it so that it's, it's done in a timely fashion instead of dragging it on too, so.
Yeah, fling shut and back and forth, meeting with meeting, absolutely.
Okay. So any other discussions, questions on Cole's motion? Karen, I'm gonna call a question. Vote, vote, you mean, vote, yeah. Okay, so we've got three.
I saw three hands.
Three hands and then. It's Karen, you know, so. So thank you very much, Rod, for taking the time to come in and, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting if you'd like.
You just, you made it just about all the way through, Rod, normally most people don't, so, well, thank you. I'll, I'll give you a call in the next couple of days, we'll get started, I'll get thanks, Rod.
Yep, take care.
Take care.
Okay, so, um. We might as well.
Do you want to hold on?
We might as well appoint somebody to sit on the.
Two members of council.
Two members.
Will's shaking his head, so apparently he's got a full committee load.
I, I'll go first.
I would also step in if.
I would. Okay, so we've got three that are interested, Barbara and Cole and.
Like I could, you can go on, I can go through the exercise.
Yeah. Okay.
It doesn't bother.
Okay, so Barbara and Cole's?
Sure. Yeah. I'd like to see it move forward.
Yeah, can, can you do a quick, just put Barbara and Coleman down as, uh, appointed members of the ad hoc. User Agreement Committee?
Oh, we should vote on that, I assume?
Yes.
So what's, any discussion on the ad hoc committee members? Karen, then I'll call the question that says.
Oh, was the separate motion?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So she could populate it and bring it up?
We're doing it like, come up on a committee.
Yeah.
Just be pretty choppy, but we're willing to be there.
Yeah.
Sounds like we agreed with them.
Uh, who, who, who moves that we?
Wants to move the appointment of Judy.
Judy moved the sort of.
Sorry, I looked and I didn't remember.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't ask for anybody, I just.
So Karen, you got that Judy looped up?
Okay, so you can bring it up anytime you want, Karen, I'll hold on it. Yeah, that's good enough. Okay, so the three that wanna vote by hand, I guess, I forget.
Favor of that.
So, in favor of George?
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you, so Karen, three hands.
She really looked it up, lost me, found the difference.
Yeah, I know, it's a pain, we need to get that part fixed, too.
Yes, working on it.
Okay, so moving on to six point two, the twenty twenty Albertus Seniors Community and Housing Association mention.
So everybody's had a chance to read the report, uh, that we've had a counselor attend, uh, for the last several years, other than obviously the COVID years that, uh, the last couple that were postponed. And, um. The Marcus Foundation is a member of the society, so, or the association, so they do the, uh, the booking. But in order for Judy to be reimbursed for, uh, the costs through her, uh, regular portion of her, uh. Uh, expense budget, it needs a motion from councils.
I have a question, is this a yearly event?
Yes.
Then, uh, somebody who sits on the Marquee Foundation, their expense should be a little bit larger, we know she's got a good talent.
Yeah, we, we account for it.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, that's why there's no.
Trying to get me warmed up.
This, that's, there's no extra expense, this is, uh, for you to approve out of the existing budget that's there.
And there, there will be no mileage.
Right, cause you ride together then. Yes, uh, generally a member of the county, uh, of their executive attends as well, a lot of times the villages don't. But there's, there's a lot of value, especially in, uh, the last few years when we've been so actively pursuing, uh, expansion of our senior housing in our community, so. Uh, there's been a real benefit from it over the last couple of years, so when Judy brought this up, uh, I just wanted to make sure that it got on the agenda so that her. As you can see, as per policy A twelve, you guys need to make a motion to ream rate for anything outside of the normal, so.
I'll make that motion.
Well, Will, Will had his hand up first.
Yep, for a little Will.
Snap that right in over the office, well.
Have fun. Okay, so Will's got a motion on the floor, uh, so. Any discussion on the motions? Karen, then we'll call a question.
Can I vote on that?
Absolutely, you got it.
I, I don't think you can, you have to.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, it's not up to Kim or her interests, it's scary, I'm just like. Okay, thank you, now we're moving on to the pool, um.
So everybody's had a chance to read the report, obviously when we were doing our planning, you guys heard the concerns, uh, the rec committee has also, uh, discussed these and, uh. Bonnie was able to, as, I wanted to kind of get this one, uh, handle on this be, well, before we start recruiting those sort of things and if it's, uh, something that's beneficial, we'll be able to actually use it as a recruitment tool for, uh. For new, uh, lifeguards as well, so what she did is, uh, brought and did a comparison wage wise and as you can see, we're right there, the, the, one of the. One of the drawbacks of doing a single year. Big increased wage to try to get people is now that becomes the expectation for your wage, you don't, you can't ever take your wages and go back down. Especially if you're planning on getting a return, so that's where, uh, the committee discussion and the internal, uh, went more to, uh, an honorarium or a bonus. Uh, for, and one of the things that this really addresses is it gets in that later part of the year. When some of the students have come home and they wanna take holidays and those sort of things before they go back to school. They also, this is based on the amount of hours you put in, so there's that incentive to actually work the full season out to, to put in, uh. Sorry, Will.
Will, he was taking a purchase.
Sitting behind you doing this.
I'm just wondering, uh. I'm just wondering how she selected the towns and cities to compare the prices, I mean, not the prices, the wages.
Comparable of, uh. Comparable outdoor swimming pools.
Okay.
Where, where she could, uh, the only one that we didn't get a response back was, uh, with Champion, we do, uh. Yeah, a lot of times we will compare with Clarison, but it's an unfair because it's year round. Yeah, so, so she reaches out to as many of the outdoor pools as we can to try to get that information.
The Lions, um, um. Clicked, uh, past the thing to, to fund the water attendance for their lifeguard, their bronze medal, their bronze medallion.
For the training side.
Yeah, and, um. We thought we'd, I think I was gonna read is, um. It'll be, we'll pay it all for five to eight, you figured, but it'll, um, pay a half upfront and then if they stay the whole season, it's done.
Excellent.
And, um, so I got some interesting comments this weekend, I was out in the boat and, uh, one fellow said to me, he said, you know. I had some friends in Calgary that came to Vulcan with their kids for swimming lessons, because they could not believe it was free. And I, I'm sitting, I said, well, that's because that's them Lions, we just did it for swimming lessons.
They won't be next year.
So we're gonna, we're gonna tweak that, shall we say, I think, so.
But yet my daughter paid for hers, she didn't live in the community.
Yeah.
You know, so I, you know, not all, not everybody was free on the farm.
But I mean, it's, it's kind of funny, I just, I thought, holy cow, cause we met people from all over last summer.
Okay, I, I don't, cause I still don't have.
Oh, sorry, it's, uh, it's up there.
But it's, when it shows, um, the hours. Like up to two seventy-nine and, and then over two eighty, so there's an hour difference, now my concern is from what I heard last year. Is that some people got prime hours and they got lots more hours than others, so I wanna make sure it's even, like every lifeguard has.
Has the opportunity.
Has the opportunity, if they know that bonus is there, everybody's gonna be wanting to shift, so I don't, I'm just gonna make sure it's.
Are you talking?
The scheduling, but the scheduling is up to the head guard and it's not up to Bonnie and Channing on how they schedule.
So who was the head guard last year, you know?
It was Spencer.
So, so.
I don't know who it is this year.
And from a, from a supervision standpoint, from, we can, we can ensure that that. And from a, from a supervision standpoint, from, we can, we can ensure that that scheduling.
That was my own question.
Evenly, apparently. It's the same, uh, when, uh, council deals with the union for the unionized employees, we have to distribute workloads evenly, and so we have to make it available. So what we do is the on-call schedule, it gets equally distributed, and then the guys decide if they, if they want to switch. But the original schedule goes out as this many hours for everyone.
Thank you.
Um, personally, I'm really happy, um, to see the wage increase. We talked about that in rec meeting, and, um, also, I'm pleased with the incentive.
There wasn't an increase to the wages?
Yes, there was.
Yeah, yeah, there was a slight to this year's level.
Increase for sure.
They, that was already, those, uh, that wage increase was very minimal, and it was based on, uh, what was in the budget floor. So it wasn't, there was an increase, but it wasn't a discussed at council, put this in the budget because we want to see an increase. It was just the, the annual increase to those wages to, to keep them in par.
Any other questions on this document? Go ahead.
So if I can, uh, really what it comes down to is if council's in favor of this, this was something that wasn't included in the budget. We did talk a little bit about, you know, whether the Lions thought we're gonna, uh, offset some training, those sort of things. Uh, so what we did is, uh, calculated on everybody receiving the top bonus. So for the two hundred and eighty hours we did, and, uh, so the maximum it'll be is thirty-nine hundred dollars for these, uh, for this incentive to stay the hours. So we have put together for you that we just included in the operation budget. So if council's in favor of it, this will be simply bringing it back in April when we do our budget with the added costs of thirty-nine hundred dollars.
If we don't get all nine lifeguards, then will that thirty-nine hundred be divvied up, uh, correspondingly?
No, it'll be done according to that rate, and, uh, and the thirty-nine hundred dollars is just to cover off if everybody stayed all those hours. So you're essentially just putting it in the budget, making it available to pay that incentive, hopefully of all nine or.
And the two hundred and eighty hours is achievable?
Should be, yeah. Cole, I'm giving a lot of support to this. Um, I think that cost, thirty-nine hundred, could easily be made back. If we have more staff, we could actually revenue money as well. So I, I think that we could potentially have a, you know, help us revenue more money than that cost.
My COVID's going, it's going proper, so we should be able to put more people in the pool, we have more guards, I agree with you.
Yeah. And one of the things that, uh, Bonnie mentioned in, in her presentation is that this should allow, uh, to run at full staff levels as long as we can get them. Again, that's, that's always a, a risk. And then if we do, then we can offer a full range of activities and, and more flexibility in that schedule. And that, that reaches out to the revenue side, those sort of things, having the doors open longer, those sort of things.
We got to remember, too, though, when there was a comment made about some of the people that come from the city, they're the ones that we make money off of. It's not the ones that buy a season's pass that utilize that facility seven days a week.
Pay for it the first week.
Pay, pay for it, yeah. They're not the ones that we make any money off of. The ones that we make money off are the ones that come in for a couple of days, a couple of events, and then, you know, disappear.
And it's also the people that are from the town that are paying the taxes.
Surrounding municipalities around our community, that too, I appreciate that. But, um, but on the other hand, too, you got to remember that if you want to make money, it's the ones that come in from the outside that.
Yeah, they pay that bill.
They're the ones that are paying the bills. Okay, so we got a motion on the floor, you got a question?
Yeah, no, I've, it's one you've made.
No. Cole made a motion.
Cole already.
Did you?
I did not.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you did, sorry.
No. All right, opens it up.
Okay.
Will.
Will was going to grab that one too easy, too.
Yeah, I saw it. Okay, Barbara made this motion to, uh, increase this in our operating budget. Any discussion on his, on her motion? Here and then, Will, call the question.
I have three hands.
And it's carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the, um, committee reports. Uh, Vulcan County Health and Wellness Foundation, um, was submitted. Any questions on that report? Okay, here and then, we'll move on to the rec committee meeting. So you saw in there where Cole was supposed to bring this back, he's, this is the second time he's discussed it about the wages for pools.
Done. So they have three plans for the sports tours?
Um, he wasn't at the meeting, actually.
Oh.
He skipped it.
Yeah.
Actually, he had a sick daughter. Um, yes, they did, but, um, they haven't presented them to us, um, to council, so.
They've been sent back to the engineer for refining, just on, on certain pieces of it. So they will be, I believe, the report is half-done inside the I-COM, so it'll probably be coming at the next meeting.
Okay, anything else for the rec?
It looks good.
Okay, here and then, we'll move on to Mayor's and Reeves of January the seventh. Any questions on that one, call? Okay, then we have the Southern Alberta Waste Energy, Energy from Waste, I should say. There's a project update memo, and then there's the executive minutes, draft minutes of January fourteenth. Any questions on either one of those?
Is Kim Craig a member of ours, huh?
Yeah. No, he's a member, he has a member, point of call, Bill.
Okay.
Okay, Vulcan Library Board, there's a mistake in it. The minutes talks about the rec board. No, rec, yeah, board, not a rec committee.
Yep, that was, um, her report. That Connie's report.
Somebody needs to.
I can clarify that.
Yeah.
We still have a, even, even the I-Society referred to the board. It's a, it's been a hard thing to shake.
Yeah, it's only been seven years, I guess, or eight, no, nine.
Two thousand and twelve, almost ten.
Ten years, so, I mean, it should be something that we should have got over, but. Anyway, any other thoughts on the library boards minutes? Okay, and then they will now have our Regional Services Commission one. Any questions on any of that one, call? Okay, if not, entertain a motion to file the, file. Okay, yes, Will?
Oh, no, just wait.
La.
He's waiting the vote now.
Oh, you're waiting for the vote.
At least you're having your own ownership.
He found out he can, uh, do some things like this.
Okay, oh, that's fine. Okay, so we'll call the question.
Yeah.
Okay. It hasn't come up, I think this is something we need to fix or eliminate. This is frustrating. It's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving on to council reports, Council of Maggason.
Okay. Uh, last week, I did a virtual meeting for the Tracton Retention Committee, uh, for the doctors. And you've seen the letter from the, the request, the letter of support from the town. And also this week, I took a course for the Assessment Review Board, uh, each morning from about eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. That was online, we took it through WebEx, and by about Friday, we had all the bugs sorted out before the meeting. Uh, one thing, when you log in, make sure that your, uh, mics are off if you're talking about people in the background or if you're, you know, cleaning your nasals or whatever. Anyhow, I took the, the course, it was, uh, Monday to Friday, and then we had seven days to, uh, take the online exam. I had some time between choice on Saturday, so I took it. It's been, I'm happy with our after now. It was actually a really interesting review, or, uh, course, uh, for, for taxes and, um, I got three books about this that to go through, so it's, uh, it's pretty cool if anyone wants to help look at them. And I think that was about it.
Any questions for Al? Very good, thank you very much. Moving on to council vote.
I had a Water Commission meeting at, um, twenty-six. Um, and of course, committee as a whole, uh, first and second. Um, an approach by, uh, some citizens about an industrial park. And, um, concern over increase of taxes, shall we say. Um, a couple of them are very adamant in their concern, and, um, so I said I would bring their concerns forward, which I am. It was, um, probably six or eight people had talked to me about it over the last, sorry, meeting. And, um, I would say half of them, as long as my taxes don't go up, I'm okay with it. And, um, I, I, that's always my concern, too, but, um, I just, I said I would bring it up, and it's brought up. So that was about it, um, just, uh, the Water Commission and the committees as a whole, and here again. So start the process all over again.
Any questions for Richard? Here and then, thank you. Oh, sorry, you had a question on?
I, I just, not necessarily for you, but I mean, um, curiosity say for people when they ask if they want development in the town or improvements in the town and that, and they, but they don't want to pay any extra taxes. Um, I'd be curious to hear what their solution is, how to get something without paying for it.
Well, it's kind of funny, I said to the one fellow, I said, kind of along that lines, I said, to do anything costs money. I said, right now, we've, we fund some of the costs for your sewer, your water. I said, and quite frankly, and I told him, I said, I think that has to change. I said, I don't think we should be funding and paying for, you know, people's slaughter and sewer. I, I don't, you know, like, I'm willing to pay, you know. But, um, I can understand, the one fellow told me what he paid for taxes. I was kind of shocked, actually, I was very shocked, actually. And, um, I said, he was one of the guys that was very adamant, shall we say. So I said, uh, well, that's something to consider, and I, I appreciate it what he, they had to say. I thank him very much, and, uh, I could totally understand where he was coming from, because that was a, it was a big dollar for where he lives, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Smith.
Uh, well, since the last meeting, I had to hold it. Had a committee meeting. I didn't have any committee meetings other than that, but I've been run off the feet somehow without councils, so I'm glad for that. Um, and, yeah, I don't have anything else.
Okay, any questions for Will? No, thank you. Counselor Sanderson.
On January twenty-fifth, I had a Marcus Foundation meeting, uh, budgets represented for the investment reports, while financial statements for the Villas, Phase Four, and the self-contained housing. Another staff contracted COVID, but they have been, they've had no other, other than that one staff. Their new cook, Lynn Jones, started February first, and I guess the staff and residents just love her, so that's awesome up there. Another new resident, um, as long as they don't die, our numbers are going up. Because it seems like we get one and lose one, so, but ever since Gloria Weavers come on, our numbers have started climbing. So that is, that is, um, good to see. They're still trying to get quotes for our needed kitchen rental. Two more names were brought forward at the last meeting, so we're trying to get the price down because it's been pretty pricey. January twenty-sixth, don't get me started, I went to the policing session in Leffbridge with Barbara. And just as they were starting, I mean, we all had our tickets, but they didn't take any of the tickets. And they said, if you are not with a council or CAO, you get out now. Yep, they were very aggressive. Now, and I thought, this is the way you're going to start a meeting? I would, it's, so it kind of put a negative to me connotation on it. They said they're not nonpartisan, but they had nothing good to say about RCMP and lots about this private. But when you stop, we, unfortunately, we had to leave to get back for a meeting for, for Barbara. So, um, we missed the cost thing, but, so if the federal government wants, they owned, what's it, thirty-five percent of that detachment down there, so potentially, we'd have to pay out that. New vehicles, new depots, new uniforms, new weapons, the training, the cost on that, I just can't, I've got something in my troops as soon as I got to you. So, I don't know, that, that worries me. I did ask, um, you know, because they say they're an arm's length from the government. I said, so is the AHS, or what, uh, and, you know, you see what's happened with our EMS. Well, it has nothing to do with EMS, we get that, but as soon as we asked a question that was, you know, pro RCMP, they could not answer. So it was, I was a little frustrated, I think we both left a little frustrated from that meeting. So I really recommend that if you, I mean, I've highlighted things, I could go on this forever, but, and I have talked to other county counselors, and they said that we were going to get half mental health and half police here, whereas we were told that it would be in the hub, which would be Opecokes or High River, and they would get to us when they could. So there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of things need to come up. I'm going to go on and answer the survey that they had there, which I haven't done yet, so. Uh, February first and second, committee as a whole, um, February tenth, FCSS Zoom meeting. We're still having issues, maybe are you aware of this, Kim, with the tellus phone?
At the FCSS?
Yes, that, uh, the pool line is going through, and FCSS is being charged for the pool phone line, and I don't know what else there all is there, but Teresa and Joan are working on that, so.
Yeah.
For some reason, they can't get it.
Because of the simple track system, it used to be that all of our phones were linked to?
So they haven't got that done yet. Uh, we did, uh, contract and performance reviews were completed, uh, partner updates, uh, knowing, uh, just a minute. Okay, that was policing, don't let me get going on that. And, uh, so February fourteenth, uh, today, this morning, uh, Victim Services. Uh, RCMP are now allowing call-ups again, so that's really, really good to hear. Unfortunately, we've got a couple of sick, uh, advocates now with COVID, so now the call-ups are open. They're down-staffing a little bit, but, um, they said you can never remember having nine advocates before with this, so Jasmine's doing an awesome job. Uh, Jasmine's also working on doing a woman's self-defense, of course, and they're looking at maybe even changing that to a family defense with all the mental and the abuse. And as you can see, if you look at the RCMP numbers, the mental health is just going through the roof. And, um, when the Health and Wellness Foundation does their wellness challenge every year, they would like to do a lot, uh, set up some learning blocks, like in Champion, Moment of that, so that people are, are aware that, uh, victim services is here, what we can offer, and get it out a little bit more to the communities, because we haven't been able to get out. And so once it opens up, Jasmine will be back in the schools as well, so. Um, the, we got a SIP grant, which was approved, um, because we don't get Solicitor General, so Jim does not pay for trauma hours, especially during COVID, that's what we mainly had was trauma calls. So we got, um, we got fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, which will pay up to five hours of trauma hours per week for a year, and, uh, five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for training hours for this year. So we're very, very, well, it goes over two years, but those are the money that, so we'll use it up in the first year for the. No.
Yep. Isn't it?
No.
It's only for.
No, it's only for, oh, we can drag it out over that time, but we're not doing that, we're doing it in here.
No, we were going over this and over this this morning.
But the, what we'd like to do, I don't know, maybe Will's aware, because we did that SISM training, were you a part of that? When we did that, what, three, maybe you were. And it was very well received, and so we'd like to put another SISM training up here, and that fifty-four fifty would go towards that. So thank you to the government. So thank you to the government for, I think it was Ron Orr that sent that, approved that. So that was exciting.
Okay, any questions for Judy? Hearing none, thank you. Councillor, who are you?
Okay, so you guys saw the Health and Wellness Report, January twenty sixth. I did the leasing then too. I had a likely board meeting on January nineteenth. I have one coming up on this man's sake. The elder abuses cancelled term warning, because we don't have a forum, and did the rec. The only thing I wanted to bring up, I've actually been approached by quite a few people about the trees on the south side of the golf course, because some of the big, big ones are still really healthy. And they have them spray painted to be completely cut down. I understand the wires, but if they were to prune them, because they're growing straight up.
You need to talk to the golf course. Is there, is there?
They will not take down any trees unless, if they're healthy. They will not take down healthy trees. Okay.
So if you got a concern.
I will tell them to go talk to the golf course.
Yes.
And there's, there's a different philosophy of what's a good tree, what's a healthy tree, and what isn't. We have that discussion all the time. So that's why they hire arborists that have a degree in looking after trees and knowing what can and can't be a tree.
One of them was a former arborist, so that's why they.
We've had that discussion lots with great peers.
Go to golf courses.
And the golf course doesn't make the decision, the arborists do. Okay.
Okay, anything else, Barbara?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dunne.
I attended a water commission meeting with Richard on the, with the date of twenty six. Also the strategic planning on February first and second with you all. I guess other committee meetings, I missed the rec, had a sick daughter that day. Then I chose to nap rather than attend virtually, because I was at the emergency room all night with her. She's doing well, though, in case anyways. Non-committee meetings, I joined the, or attended a car club meeting, just to kind of get a bit of a background of what goes on there. It was informative, and they are really excited to work with Rod. And I think there's going to be hopefully a good dialogue there. Also, I attended a Spock Days meeting. I realizing I'm coming to the age where I can no longer participate in some of the Spock Days events. So I thought I would maybe start volunteering, so.
Did you want me to get you a worker?
Well, it's getting there, but, so I think I'm on the Spock Days committee now. And that's, that's it.
Any questions for Cole? Okay, hearing none. I will, thank you very much. Mine, I had a SEWA board meeting. I guess the general drift that came out of that was is that we had a donation by one of the board members of ten thousand dollars towards the project to try and move it forward. We didn't qualify for the federal government grant under the, I can't remember what it was, but what it was called. But anyway, we didn't qualify. They thought we did. We spent all the time and effort of applying for the money and didn't get it. So the project's still moving forward. It's just, we did have one municipality that came forward and said that they would come up with the other sixteen thousand dollars that we needed to move the REO into evaluation. But we have to bring it to the board because of the, it was a board decision to wait for the seat that grabbed and see if we qualified for it. Again, planning meetings, the two days. Thank you very much for everybody that participated. If you haven't got your list in, get them in. Otherwise, we'll just cut them off with what we've got in so far, and you know, your information will be lost. Mayors and Reeves, it didn't start till two o'clock because they hadn't invited Minister of Health and EMS representative to the meeting, and both of them came. And so we had it a little later, but there was forty-nine participants. Three MPs, Martin Shields, Rachel, were both there in person. And then Colleen was there for Minister Mott's. And ninety-nine percent of the discussion was over the disaster that's going on down east. And the positive stuff that happened and the huge negative stuff that happened. So I mean, we probably spent forty-five minutes discussing the mess that's going on down east in the Coots border. And then we had MLA Grant Hunter, and again, he had some great things to discuss about it. And again, some of the really ugly, negative stuff that came from it too. Hunter Hunters, he said that the, on February twenty-second, back into legislation. On February twenty-fourth, it'll be a budget that's put down, or sat down, or rolled out. Again, huge discussion about the rolling blockades and how the disappointment there is and how it's been handled in the province of Alberta, both on the positive and the negative sides, you know. And how, yeah, there's lots of fallout over that one. Then we went into, met with Minister of Health, with Jason Copine and Darren Sandbeck. Their EMS has entered into a ten-point plan. They have formed, the province has formed a committee with three MLAs on it, and they are going to travel around the province and try and glean information of pros and cons of the things that they can have. They will have a subcommittee for dispatch review. And then there are going to be a subcommittee also of air ambulance review. The air ambulance committee is part of the committee that the province has put in together. And the other dispatch one is totally separate. It's going to be done through, totally, totally separate. And so our, I mean, the mayors and reevers are going to invite this committee to come and put representation there. You know, because there are some people that are very, very opposed and adamant and excited and disillusioned what's been going on with EMS. Alberta Southwest was pretty decent, discussion that went on. South Grove was a disaster again because of the chairman of South Grove is also the mayor of Coots. And he has been threatening, he's been threatened. And like, you know, loses outside his house, his family's been threatened. And he says, you know, for a hundred bucks a month, he says, why would I ever want to be in public service and be treated as poorly as I've been treated? And he says, unfortunately, it wasn't from the people that started the process. They had a permit to have a rolling, slowing down. It was the annex that came along with that group and created all the problems. And yeah, I think that we're going to see Mr. Willett quit politics over this, which is really sad to see in a municipality. So anyway, he went into the South Grove stuff, but because he had an opportunity to have podium, he used it to say how disappointed he was with what was going on. Then we went on to a couple of other items and, you know, both the Highway Three twinning, and they're going to start on some of it this year. I didn't catch what part. Highway Three is going to be twin, but it's going to be something that's relatively simple, not through the passwords, all the hard stuff. And then I had to leave the meeting at four fifteen, and so I didn't get the very end one. Shannon, she always has, so I missed hers. She's always at the end. And, but anyway, so yeah. I think that's pretty well it for the mayors and reeves. It'll be out in minutes. And then I also attended the R and R with La. And again, like La said, the letter of support, you know, come to the town and to the county and a couple of, three or four other groups, hoping that the Health and Wellness Foundation will supply a letter of support towards applying for this. It's not a grant, it's a, it's an award, I think it is.
Yeah, it's an award.
Yeah, but anyway. I too had a discussion with, on industrial park with seven business people. And it wasn't one of them that didn't think it was a positive move. All of them said that, you know, you can put a new sewer line down a residential street and your taxation goes up zero, zero. Not a cent goes up for your, put a new sewer line, a new pavement, or new sidewalks, new gutters, new swimming pool, any of these things. But yeah, if you have one business that comes in, or one residence that comes in, then your tax base starts to increase. So unless we like to see our, our stats that, you know, Stats Canada came up with, you know, we have to do something in their opinion. There were seven business people sitting in the, in the meeting. And the one I thought would be very opposed to because they're up in that area, you know. I thought that they would be the one that would be the, you know, least happy with seeing their taxation go up. And he thought that if we don't do something, we're going to see it digress. And so again, I appreciate the ones that we talked to, Richard. I never went, and I went into this, this discussion, it wasn't a meeting, but they were there. And a newspaper had just come out the day before and discussed it, and they thought that if we don't do something, you know, some of our major businesses that pay large taxation, if you think there's a resident that pays huge taxation, you should take a look at the three major big businesses that we have in our community and look at their taxation. And fortunately, you know, all of us had an opportunity to see what kind of tax base that they have. And not one of them were opposed to investing in something like this. But again, you know, it depends on which side of the fence you're at of the day, you know. Doesn't matter which side, there's a pros and cons, and so that will come back to us. That's pretty well it for me. Again, thank you very much for everybody that participated in the planning session, whatever you want to call it. Any questions for me?
Do you know which three MLAs are going to be on the EMS?
I didn't write it down. The one's father was involved with City of Calgary, starting the EMS in City of Calgary. I met with him too, with Jason Copine, had another meeting with Dispatch. And this guy was very, very, very positive to take information down. So once I know their names, but they will come around to a lot of areas. But I mean, they've got the whole problems to look at, they're not just the south, and that seems to be the south is where we're having the majority. But yet, you know, Darren deflected quite a few things, which is quite normal. He saw me and he waved at me, but I never asked a question or made a comment. I just thought that I would say something that I probably shouldn't, so I thought I'd keep my mouth shut.
Not to Darren.
Like Darren and I have huge discussions, like huge discussions when we meet, I mean, because him and I go back a long time. You know, probably forty years. Any, any other thoughts or questions? So as soon as I know who those three are, I'll, I'll let you guys all know, and then we can. Anyway, okay, thank you very much. So need a motion to, can you see it for information?
Will's either voted or he's going to make that motion.
Okay, Will's making a motion. Thank you. Okay, so any discussion on Will's motion? Hearing none, call for a question, and so three have voted in favor. Again, we need to get this.
Yes.
Mine hasn't come up.
Just, just came up, or maybe so.
Again, I think it's an internet bandwidth issue.
Here it comes.
Mine hasn't come up, so.
Oh, there we go.
Okay, I guess we're all in favor, I guess. I don't know anything about it because it doesn't come up, so we'll have to anticipate. It's carried, you know, so. Okay, moving on to administrative reports, action list.
So everybody's had a chance to review the list. The only thing outstanding on that list from the last meeting is obviously the preparing the borrowing bylaw and the tender process. And as you know, that's going to be on for a couple of months because we need to get the rest of the drawings done before we get to the tender side. We will be bringing the bylaw back sooner than that, but we do want to get some final pricing before we move that forward. So those will be on the list for a couple of months. So unless there's anything else that's outstanding, then council has any questions on that report on the activity list.
Any questions on that one, Tim? Moving on to CAOs.
That's awesome, because my CAO report is not coming up now. There we go. Which tells me it is an internet thing, if the one that's hooked to our server is being slow. So you've all had a chance to review our report. It's been since January twenty-fourth. We really, I spent a lot of time with Ag Society members, different members, talking about this proposal and the agreement. They all seem to be on the same page about moving that forward. I've done quite a bit of work for the planning session. I have consolidated the lists. I still need two lists to come in, and once I get those in, I'll get that consolidated list sent out for you guys to review. And Ian, talk to the mayor. I did show him the list of what I have so far. It might be beneficial, because I knew that I could send this back and forth in email, but the list has become fairly substantial. So it might be simpler to actually just sit down for another two, three hours to just bring up the final, you know, twelve fifteen that you'd like to do. So anticipate that we will have one more meeting just to finalize that list of what you want to put out to the public.
You don't mind, you do, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. There's only two outstanding, and they won't take me very long to put together once again, so. And I've met with Trinis to go through some of our IT. They're working on the background for getting the tablets to shut down after a couple of seconds. It's on Microsoft, apparently Microsoft and Apple trying to get their device management stuff to work together is a little bit tricky. So the stuff that allows, the stuff that allows you access to our server, like get emails and that, like the backside of the Apple stuff. So they're, they're working on that. I did get the, obviously, the covers for old machines are here now. I met with North and Company. We've worked on the property sale for the industrial and the Whispering Creek areas that we put in. SEMA's obviously working on the industrial servicing plan. I prepared a tax arrears repayment agreement for some outstanding tax arrears to keep a property from going to tax sale. And the province has decided that they're going to, they were supposed to start the fiscal framework in 2022, the new funding that's going to replace MSI. But they sent out an amending agreement for 2022 and 2023. So obviously, we're not even going to see the fiscal framework until 2024. Tom came in because they needed a signature from, for the mayor and myself, so we got that back and turned around right away. There was no indication on the amending agreement, whether the funding was going to remain the same or not. It left it very vague. So we are still budgeting as if it's going to drop that forty percent, so. And then obviously, we've got the county industrial infrastructure proposal that we're going to review in closed session. Yeah, worked with the councillors, the ones doing courses. Had some IT issues with logging in and that, so it was actually really nice. I watched Cole through his course and when Lyle called me a couple of days later with exactly the same question, I look like a wizard because I. Lyle went, I'm in, and I'm like, great. So I'm not really that good at the IT stuff. It just, if I had to do it twice, I'd get better at it, so.
When do you actually hear back about the MSF funding?
That'll be after the budget, on the twenty-fourth, so. And formal meetings, I attended the APIS training. It was the final before they were supposed to roll it out, and I represented the town on the super user side. So I have, I'm the one that signs off on all Gabby stuff that goes through that. I took my training, and then the next day, they let us know that they were postponing it for three months. So obviously, the committee of the whole stuff. And then I had a development meeting. This one was a little bit interesting. It was a franchise business that is looking to move to our community, so we did a tour with them and showed them some places around town, looking pretty promising. They opened up with meeting with us, telling that, telling us that they're in a growth cycle. So they're anticipating other businesses to be doing the same in the next little while, so. It was, it was nice to entertain somebody that had optimism about growth and looking at Vulcan as very viable for their, for their business. So that was what I had over mine, unless there's any questions from council about anything outstanding on the list. That was what I had over my, unless there's any questions from council about any thing outstanding on the rise.
Fingers crossed, Dave.
Yeah, it was, it was a good meeting. Uh, Lyle attended, uh, on behalf of the, the real estate side to make sure that, uh, we didn't miss any eligible buildings and whatnot. Uh, to be completely honest and not, uh, be too open about it, uh, I think they had a very good idea of what they wanted when they came to town. Uh, they, uh, I, I think we were, we were middlemen for an introduction, I believe. Is that what you got from that? And I think that they got the information that they were looking for, so. It was pretty promising.
Okay.
That's my report.
Questions for Kim, please? Okay, now, we'll move on to development managers' report. Questions on any of that? And then, we'll move on to public works.
I have one question on that.
On the bits, which one, which one, public works?
On the public works, sir.
Oh, public works, okay.
Uh, he says the news gets here when I'm delivered until March of twenty-twenty?
Yeah, twenty-twenty-two. Yeah, just a typo. I think he was excited to, uh, be going on holiday.
Yeah. Just was going to make sure it wasn't going to be twenty-twenty-three or something.
Yeah, no, twenty-twenty-two is still, we're anticipating. Just a typo.
Okay, anything else on Stu's? Okay, moving on to community services managers' report.
Did they refine anybody to run the construction yet?
Uh, to put the ads out, we've had one out that it's going to be reviewed.
Um, do you think it would be prudent, um, moving into the future, um, for Bonnie to keep track of, like, the numbers, but also how she used to do town and county? She used to do that.
Yes, I know she did. And, uh, yes, it was based on the upcoming discussion for the rec agreement. It was just whether you want to segregate or post numbers or not.
Okay.
That would probably have some bearing on tomorrow's meeting.
Future.
Yeah, may, depending on the feeling that you get coming out of tomorrow's meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on Bonnie's? Okay, move on to peace officers. Any questions on Gabby's?
Gabby was able to attend the, uh, uh, Peace Officers Conference in Jasper and, uh, was able to fulfill some of her training requirements as well, so, uh, she was gone last week before that. Said it was for an in-person conference. It went very well.
Okay, no questions on that one. We'll move on to fire chiefs. Any questions on Peters? Okay, hearing none. I'm on the other. Somebody wants to file, uh, reports. Richard?
I need him before you.
Any question or discussion on Richard's question? Hearing none, we'll call the question. I guess I might as well put on my hand, too, because nothing's coming up at the moment, so.
Kicked you out of the meeting, too, didn't I?
You're, you're green?
I'm green, yeah, but it's nothing, nothing's coming up, so. How about you, Steve? Okay, is, are we carrying the answers here?
I'm just loading.
It's just loading here now, so.
It's got to be a bandwidth thing.
It's, it's ridiculous.
Because I can't, some of my reports aren't moving properly.
Anyway, so those in favor, and it's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. This is ridiculous. Okay, moving on to our closed meeting. So, the motion to move it in camera is to do with our Freedom of Information and Protection Privacy Act, Section twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, intergovernmental relations, so.
Yeah, very specifically, section twenty-three, that, uh, we refuse to disclose information of an advocate that, uh, the disclosure could reasonably be expected to reveal a draft of a resolution, bylaw, or legal instrument uh, by which the local body acts. So, uh, because this, uh, proposal is tied to an agreement that could possibly be put in place, uh, between two governments, uh, it's suggested that you, uh, talk about it in a, in a closed session before bringing it out, making it public, so.
Okay, so I need a motion. Judy?
Thank you.
Any discussion on Judy's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Those in favor? And it's carried unanimously, so we are out.
Moving camera at nine sixteen. I'm going to bring the camera in to our side, and we're going to. And we're back.
Okay, so Cole's moved us out of the camera. Those in favor? It is carried unanimously. Okay, moving on to the motion that we, or the information that was received from moving camera.
Uh, so council discussed putting a motion forward, uh, that council directs administration to review the Vulcan County Industrial Wastewater Servicing Proposal with SEMA Plus and to bring back recommendations to the February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting of council for consideration.
Okay, so Cole moves that. Any discussion on Cole's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Those in favor? It's carried unanimously again. Okay, I need one more motion here, folks, to go adjourn. Will got his hand up pretty quick there.
Well, you're the man.
Okay, any discussion on Will's motion to be adjourned? Hearing none, we'll call the question. Those in favor? It's carried unanimously. Okay, so we're out.
Okay.
So, did you want to wait a couple of minutes here?
I'm just going to.